Ask Ms. Segul if she would do roll call, please.
Holly Jarvis, here. Kim Winter.
Here.
Andrea Fick. Abbot Chuck Malki.
Here.
Autumn Henry.
Here.
Alyssa Bouchard.
Here.
Carrie Germaine.
Here. Thank you very much, Sue. Now I would invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. An exciting day that I'm sure Mr. Heatherton will fill us in on. And we have some administrators in the office, the meeting, who have had a very busy day saying goodbye to their students for the summer. This is an opportunity next on our agenda for public comment related to agenda items. If you'd like to address the board, please come forward to the podium, state your name, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. No one? All right, you'll have another opportunity towards the end of the meeting. Next, we have our consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval. Okay, Holly?
I'll second, just with one caveat. Carrie, do we want to move up approval of SCEA employment so they don't have to sit through everything? If they so want to, or no?
I will leave that up to Rod.
Yeah, that's up to Rod.
I don't know that everyone is here at this point. I don't know that.
We have really light, there's no board reports. And Bill said he's five minutes or less, so there's probably no reason.
Okay.
Well, thanks Chuck, that was thoughtful. So with that, Chuck, did you say you would support?
Yes.
Okay, with support, any comments or questions? Hearing none. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Chuck Malki?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Holly Jarvis?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you so much. All right, next, we have superintendent report.
Thank you, good evening. Today was the last day of school, and we wish all our students out there to have an amazing and fantastic summer, and enjoy the warm weather. And don't forget to grab a few books to read while you're relaxing this summer. And to the staff, thank you for all the hard work that you've done. And please make sure you get a chance to disconnect and unwind. Jim and I got around to all the buildings today to chat with students and staff, and some great activities going on, and some really funny end-of-the-year T-shirts as well, and some great pictures. So it looked like everyone was celebrating their last day. I'd like to thank Dave and Jim for all of the, all of the work that they've done. As you can see tonight, we have a big lineup of SCEA proposed hires. And they have had some excellent committees, and doing some excellent work. And to have, I don't know, almost three, fours of our first round of openings to be closed off already is a, is a great spot to be in. I think I've mentioned this before, but Dave's, you know, updated our HR software, which makes some of these committees a lot smoother and more efficient to run. So thank you to them. Congratulations also to our admin team. If you recall, that we had eight people start out in new positions this year at the beginning of the year, and so they all made it through their very first year. Congratulations. Two things that I noticed this year from the group of principals is that they had a positive attitude, and they really worked their tails off. So there's nothing more you can ask from an employee who works hard and stays positive. And so thank you to, to that group who came in green to their positions, and, and actually had one of the best years we've had in a long time. So thank you to them. We do have a ribbon cutting for GHS, if you're interested in going. GHS, as you know, bought the old Baker College. And they are now located, one of their offices is now located on Bristol Road. So I'll pass that down if you're interested in attending. You have the information there. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Rod. Any questions for Rod? I, I would like to ask the board and those that would like to join in to give our administrators all across the board a round of applause. We see how hard you work every day, and through the summer. And it was wonderful to today, today see all the activities for the last day of school, and the fun that it looked like everybody was having. And I, I heard there were some tears along the way, but thank you for all that you do. We really appreciate you. All right.
I have two questions.
Oh, sure.
The, any of the positions that we're filling today, are they just replacements?
They're all replacements.
Okay, good. And then with these replacements, then I think David was in here, you'll be able to give us a flow chart, a new flow chart? I haven't seen one in a while, so.
We can have that ready to roll in August, for sure. I assume that we're gonna probably have a few more holes come July, when people start taking opportunities to do other things, but yeah.
Teacher-wise, okay. And then I, I noticed we didn't talk about summer school, so I'm assuming we're not having it. This year, we didn't have enough interest, or there was no grant money available for it?
We have summer school. Jim, would you like to give a quick report?
Oh, I never heard of it. Good.
Yeah, basically, it's a continuation of what we offered in the past. We have students in K-3 that'll be at Moorish. And then we have 4-5 at our STEM lab. They're gonna have STEM summer camp at the middle school.
And how many kids are involved? That's the first I've heard about, but thank you.
So typically, our goal is to get 150 total, or at least with our STEM lab. And we'll have about 200, I'm thinking. Jaclyn, you're here, how, what's our number for summer school at the K-3?
We're close to 100 right now. We're trying to keep class sizes around 15, so that the literacy interventions are most impactful with smaller numbers. So we are running four sections of kindergarten, first, second, and third grade over at Moorish. For those, it's 16 days total for the month of July, Monday through Thursday, like we've done in the past.
And then summer school for the high school is credit recovery. And we'll have some students taking place, showing up to gather some credits toward graduation.
Well, yeah, I think the answer, she said about 100. I think Jim said closer to 200, but that doesn't include the high school.
Right.
And then the funding is coming from... Thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions. The informational items in your packet are the employment of non-certified staff. We have three student lifeguards that look like they've been employed for the summer, which is great news. Also, next, we... Oh, go ahead, Kim.
Those lifeguards are like for open swim during summer?
Thanks, Kim. All right, next, we have board discussion items. District operation report, Mr. Loder.
So speaking of people new to their position, Mr. Loder has completed his first year, and he is so excited to do a board presentation. Come on up, Mr. Loder. He has truly knocked it out of the park. Every building that I talk to, when they have something in need, Bill gets it taken care of pretty quickly. So excited to hear his report.
Yeah, thanks for having me. My name is Bill Loder. I've been your operations director for 10 months now, but I've been with the district for almost 15 years. So this is my first report. So I'm just gonna do an update on our departments. So we're gonna start with the maintenance department. We have Dan Loder, he's our HVAC technician. Gene Richards, maintenance tech. Todd Florence, maintenance tech. Zach Hartwix, our grounds worker. Mike Toomes is our new plumber. He's been awesome. And Brad Beeler is our new maintenance tech. Cory Went is our operations secretary. I kinda wanted to show you the amount of work orders we get a year. So this year alone, we had 3,400 work orders. So 1,600 of them are auto-generated. They're just our PM, monthly PMs. They come out the first of every month. 1,800 are entered by staff. So it's about 13 work orders on average per day, over 260 working days. We try to get them done in 48 hours. Doesn't always happen, but we do our best. And as of right now, we have 60 open work orders. So I think that's pretty impressive by the guys. I was going through all of our HVAC equipment. I kinda wanted to show this slide. I thought this was pretty incredible. We have 13 buildings that we maintain. Out of those 13 buildings, we have 21 boilers, 16 water heaters, 40 circulating pumps, 150 bulldog units, six dry coolers, 30 rooftop units, 135 exhaust fans, 25 split AC units, 13 are handling units. And we have to change 360 filters three times a year. So I thought that was pretty, pretty incredible, too. I got some summer projects I have planned. We have to clean all the bulldog units. We have boiler cleanings coming. I wanna get the baseball, softball dugouts, roaster replacement, they're leaking pretty bad. Gym floor is gonna be resealed, all the gym floors, even the cage, in August. Painting and sealing of the track. We're gonna do some crack repair in the lots. We got the dry cooler installations, that's starting Monday. And then the cage parking lot's coming. Here at Greatville Park, will be wrapped up in September, maybe October. And then we're gonna get started on the filter first upgrades here, now the school's out. Switching to custodial, we have custodial supervisors, Michelle Robbins. We have 11 first shift employees, 11 second shift, three custodial floaters, and one athletic floater. They have just under 600,000 square feet of buildings to clean. Thought that was pretty incredible, too. Their daily tasks, to ensure building cleanliness, sweeping, mopping, vacuuming, dusting, cleaning desktops, countertops, sanitizing the restrooms, emptying trash. Our goal is maintaining a safe, clean environment for the staff and students. Summer tests, starting tomorrow, that goes beyond the daily tasks. They clean out the lockers, they remove all the furniture from the rooms, clean all the furniture, deep clean the floors, strip all the hallways, classrooms, re-wax, clean windows, door frames, dusting. And then on top of that, classroom moves. So, and I also wanna thank the staff, the custodians, there's every weekend something going on in these buildings, and the custodial staff always is willing to pick up extra shifts. So that's, that's awesome. Helps us out a lot. Moving on to the transportation department. We have transportation coordinator, John Meehan, afternoon dispatcher, Cory Went. We have 21 drivers, two substitute drivers, two trip drivers. Our head bus mechanic, Rich Brownfield, and two certified diesel mechanics. Our fleet, we have 23 school buses, one storage bus, Dragon Diner, 10 GISD buses that our guys maintain. And then our routes, we do 68 routes a day, averaging 5.31 hours per driver. That's an average route time of about 45 minutes. So this year, trips alone, trips to sporting events and field trips, we had 559 trips this year. And in the month of May, we had 149 trips alone. So that was amazing. So overall, I just wanna thank all the departments. They're always willing to step up. Everybody always has a great attitude. Most of the guys are on-call, are always willing to pick up extra shifts. Overall, it's just been a wonderful, wonderful team to work with. Everybody's been great. That's it, that's my presentation for you, if you have any questions.
Great job.
Oh, thank you.
And very nicely done. The presentation is very straightforward. And very impressive work that your teams do.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I was just wondering, what's the storage bus?
The storage bus, it's one of our extra buses. We've took all the seats and everything out of it, and we stack it full of chairs and tables. When other schools need a ton of chairs or a ton of tables, we just drive that bus over there, and we can unload them, and we can leave the bus there whenever their, whatever their event is that they're having is done, we load everything back up on the bus, and come back and park it in the lot.
Do they afford us that courtesy, too, Bill?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Do they afford us that courtesy to the other schools? Do they have a storage bus, do you know?
I don't.
They don't?
I don't think so. I, I don't, I don't know.
Your staffing, are you up to staff on everybody?
Yes, we are.
You're compliment, okay. How much overtime do you think you're running them on? Roughly, not, not an exact number.
Uh, 10 to 20 hours.
For the entire?
For probably custodial staff, not our maintenance staff, their custodial staff.
10 to 20, and it, it, that's actually pretty good, especially with all the cleaning you're gonna have to do this summer.
Yeah.
What about your maintenance staff, overtime? Just mostly on-call stuff, if something breaks?
Just on-call stuff, yep. Yep, I haven't had to call them in very much this year. It's been a pretty smooth, pretty smooth year this year.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
How are we doing on bus drivers compared to other districts, and what our needs will be in the fall?
We just had some bus drivers retire, so John and I are gonna be hiring some new drivers, probably getting after it real soon, right, John?
Yes.
I see John back there smiling.
My application's coming in next week.
How many left?
How many, I'm sorry?
How many bus drivers left?
21, that leaves us by 18, 19? 18, 18, 21, we have 18 bus drivers right now.
Well...
We've lost three, as of today.
Yeah, great, that's, on a personal note, we were helping to get 14 four years ago, so that's good that we have that many.
It's what helps with the trips, for starters. Bus drivers who get sick, because they have been getting sick, and it just also maintains that we don't have so many students per bus, as well, in making each bus trip 45 minutes only.
How do the bus drivers receive the extra trips? Is it done on a point system or an hour system?
No, through the contract, the HSM contract. Every two weeks, we hold a bus trip meeting, it goes by seniority, they start picking, and they go through each bus seniority, starting top, going to the bottom.
Okay.
They pick their trips that way.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you again, Bill, for all that you do and your team, and please give them our regards, and hope that you all can enjoy some time this summer.
I will, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, great information. All right, next, we are moving on to the approval of SCEA employment, our favorite time.
Yes, we do have six hires to bring before you for approval today. So let's start with Mrs. Briggs, and she will first bring up Carly Coke. Come on up, Carly.
Good evening. I'd like to present to you Carly Coke, she, for recommendation for hire at Deke Elementary. She is a very positive and collaborative educator with experience across multiple buildings and grade levels in Swartz Creek Community Schools. She began her teaching journey in kindergarten, and moved into several long-term subbing roles, and served as a premier sub at Elms Elementary. And for the last one and a half years, she's held a long-term sub position in 5th grade at Deke Elementary. She currently is enrolled in the M-Arch Teacher Certification Program at the University of Michigan-Flint, and she has her interim teaching certificate at this point in time. She's bringing strong instructional readiness, a passion for hands-on learning and science, and leadership experience as a head volleyball coach as well. And she's excited to start her coaching experience here at Swartz Creek.
Thank you, Heather. Holly, would you like to say something, introduce yourself?
Yes, so I'm Carly. I've been in Swartz Creek for about four years now, and I'm honored to be here. And I just love the sense of community and family that the school brings. And I'm excited to dive into 3rd grade now.
So I'll ask you the question that I'll ask all of the candidates. Why did you choose Swartz Creek?
So my biggest thing was like being a family and being close. Like, some of my best friends now I've made in the district, just in the last four years, that I talk to daily. So just having that sense of like community, and people to lean on, and having that relationship was really my biggest thing about Swartz Creek, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's always wonderful to hear.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, any questions for Carly? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval. Thank you, Chuck, as support. Alyssa? Be it res, any comments or questions? Be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the SCEA employment of Carly Coke, 3rd grade teacher at Deke Elementary as presented. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Chuck Malki?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Holly Jarvis?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes, congratulations.
Thank you.
We will ask Ms. Briggs to stay up here, and we will bring up Haley Gent.
I would like to present to you Haley Gent, for recommendation to hire as a 5th grade teacher at Deke Elementary. Haley has a strong foundation both general and special education, with a focus on upper elementary learners and students with learning disabilities. Her academic success at Michigan State University includes a high GPA, participation in the Urban Educator Cohort Program, and that reflects her dedication, adaptability, and commitment to educational equity. She brings valuable experience through multiple field placements and student teaching internships, where she supported IEPs, implemented differentiated instruction, and collaborated with both general and special education teams. She's had leadership roles, CPR, and first aid certification, with experience working as a cap counselor, and also gymnastics coach. And she's ready to demonstrate her interpersonal skills, versatility, and passion for helping students grow. We are excited to have Haley Gent join our team at Deke Elementary.
Hello, Haley. You're, you're free to tell us about yourself if you'd like, and then I will ask you why you chose Swartz Creek.
Hi, I'm Haley, and I'm just really excited to begin my first year teaching in the Swartz Creek District.
So why did you choose Swartz Creek?
I chose Swartz Creek because it was very welcoming when I came in for my interview, and I wanted to find a sense of community, and that's what I felt like I found when I came here.
Thank you very much for sharing that. Any questions for Haley?
I just have a comment. You look like you should've just graduated high school.
We're glad you chose us. Anyone else? All right, with, with that, I would entertain a motion for approval. Chuck? And Holly? All right, comments or questions? Be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the SCEA employment of Haley Gent, 5th grade teacher at Deke Elementary as presented. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Chuck Malki?
Yes.
Holly Jarvis?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes. Motion passes. Welcome.
Next up, we will ask Mrs. Bevel to come forward with Erica Bryant.
So I'm so excited to bring Erica Bryant before you. She has a wealth of knowledge, especially in early literacy. She's reading Recovery Trained, which is a wonderful, wonderful qualification, especially for our little learners. She's very collaborative, she's excited to get started with the 1st grade team, and she has a depth of knowledge in MTSS.
Well, Erica, please tell us about yourself. This isn't an interview, this is the easy part. And then, why did you choose Swartz Creek?
Hi, I'm Erica. I've worked with 1st graders my entire career, so 13 years. I love the community aspect. I really wanna be at a district where we can watch the kids grow from K to 12. Personally, Swartz Creek made such a difference for my oldest stepchild. Your adult continuing ed program allowed her to get her GED, and without that program, I don't know that it would've been possible. So personally, it made such an impact in my life, and I'm excited to do the same.
Aw, testimony we weren't looking for, but we appreciate, thank you. Any questions for Haley, or Erica, sorry? None? All right. With that, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Chuck? Support? Kim? All right, any comments or questions? Be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the SCEA employment of Erica Bryant, 1st grade teacher at Siring Elementary as presented. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Holly Jarvis?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Chuck Malki?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Congratulations.
Next up, we have Mrs. Thompson at Moorish Elementary with Lily Boyce.
Hello, I am very excited to present Lily Boyce for my recommendation for hire. Lily is a recent graduate from U of M, and we were really lucky to have Lily as a student teacher in 1st grade at Moorish this fall. She did an amazing job building relationships with her kids and their families. And she also jumped right into our new literacy and math programs that we had this year in the K-2 building, and she did a wonderful job. So I'm very excited to have her onboard, teaching 2nd grade this year, where she'll be able to continue possibly having some of the 1st graders that she's student-taught in her own classroom now. Lily Boyce.
Welcome, Lily. Tell us about yourself, and then why did you choose Swartz Creek?
So during my time at Moorish Elementary, my student teaching, I learned so much. I was in a 1st grade classroom with Stephanie Sworder, and I can contribute most of my own teaching philosophy to her, and just the other educators at Moorish who really helped me. And then after that, I also worked as a premier substitute at Siring Elementary for the second half of the school year. And again, that was such a great learning experience for me. And I just, I love the community aspect, the family aspect at Swartz Creek. I just love the collaboration that goes on throughout the grade levels and throughout the buildings as well. And I think that your values as a district really align with my personal values as an educator.
Thank you very much for sharing that.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? With that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Chuck? Lily? Not Lily. Be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the SCEA employment of Lily Boyce, 2nd grade teacher at Moorish Elementary as presented. And Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Chuck Malki?
Yes.
Holly Jarvis?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Next, we have Ms. Chantel Manning, Elms Road Elementary Principal, with Heather Selden.
I read two different paragraphs. I got day for Heather and Chantel for Megan. My apologies. Sorry, Megan, and also for freaking out Chantel.
Good evening, I'm here to present, I'm excited to be here. I have Megan Parsons with me for recommendation to hire to you. She's a recent grad of Saginaw Valley State University. She has experience using SEL during her student teaching, so that is a positive for us with some of the positivity project. And she has a deep understanding of best instructional practices. So once again, I'm here to present to you Megan Parsons.
Welcome, Megan.
Hi.
As everyone else, we've asked, just talk about yourself a little bit if you'd like, and then tell us why you chose Swartz Creek.
So I would like to start out with, with saying why I'm choosing Swartz Creek. I do have a funny comment to say. My mom actually grew up in Swartz Creek, and my grandparents lived down at Elms Road, actually. So secretly, I always wanted to be a dragon, but I was a cardinal. That's where I did, I did my education in Davison. I love the sense of community that Swartz Creek has to offer, and really educating the entire child, not just what we want them to learn in the classroom, but also preparing them to go out into the real world.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No? With that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Chuck? Support? Holly? Be it resolved that the Swartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the SCEA employment of Megan Parsons, 5th grade teacher at Elms Road Elementary. fifth grade teacher at Elms Road Elementary as presented. And once more, Sue, can you do roll call?
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, this time, we have Heather Soden and Mr. Simonson.
Good evening. Pleased to present to you Heather Soden, recommended for hire. She does have a Swarts Creek connection I just found out about, but I'll let her talk about that. I'll talk about her preparations. First of all, special education teachers are very hard to come by these days, and she comes to us with a wealth of expertise, a couple of master's degrees, and worked at Elms Road this past year, in part with her job with the ISD, working with some of our visually impaired students. So she has a skill set that is very valuable to us right now. And she heard that we were hiring through some of those connections and was recommended to me, which I didn't tell her this, but recommended to me by a couple of different people, some from the ISD and some from our own district, just based on their connections with her. So we're glad to see that she'd like to come work with us and excited to get her started up at Elms as a resource room teacher.
Welcome, Heather.
Thank you.
Tell us about yourself and why you chose Swarts Creek, please.
So last year, I recently relocated up here from Kentucky, and I had been teaching at the School for the Blind. The ISD kind of came in and offered me a position. It allowed me to go to all the different schools, really get a sense of where do I want to work, where don't I want to work. I ended up, Swarts Creek felt like home. Both my parents graduated from Swarts Creek. My dad and all of his siblings grew up in Swarts Creek. And my grandma actually worked for Swarts Creek before she passed away from cancer, and I never got to meet her. So it's just kind of nice to have that connection. But really, when I went into the building, I mean, both, I mean, I was in Moorish and Elms Road all the time. They were the easiest to get into as far as they knew who I was, they were welcoming, everyone was willing to work with me. That's the sense of community that I wanted and where, the type of people that I want to work with. So they found out that I have five teaching certifications, and they, it was kind of an easy process after that.
That's amazing. What's your double master's?
So I have a double bachelor's in elementary ed and special ed, and then I have a master's as literacy specialist, and then my master's in visual impairment. When I transferred up to Michigan, it transferred us five teaching credentials. It took the learning disabilities and the emotional impairment and split it into two certifications up here.
Wow, that's impressive.
Thank you.
We know how difficult it is to find special education teachers, but you are definitely sounding like a jewel. So thank you for that. Any other questions? No? With that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Any support? Thanks, Kim. Be it resolved that the Swarts Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the SCEA employment of Heather Soden, special education teacher at Elms Road Elementary as presented. And Sue, one more time, can you do a roll call? Thank you.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
That was you, Chuck.
Was that me?
Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Six yeses.
Thank you. Motion passes. Congratulations. All right, I'm just going to say, what an impressive group, and we are very fortunate to have you choose us. Thank you for doing that. I don't know if anybody's doing the pictures afterwards that we do occasionally. Are you that person?
Yes.
Oh, cool. I enjoy those afterwards, learning more about you. So thank you. I'm also going to say, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we wouldn't be offended if you were to get up and go. But you're also welcome to stay for the meeting. So. Moving on, we have the approval of our MHSAA membership resolution.
Yes, this is our yearly membership resolution. This resolution allows us to participate in MHSAA and have our high school sports credited by MHSAA for your approval.
All right, thanks, Rod. With that, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Chuck? Holly? Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Be it resolved that the Swarts Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the SCEA employment, I'm sorry, we're going to hire Heather twice. Be it resolved that the Swarts Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the MHSAA Membership Resolution 2526 as presented. Sue, can you do roll call, please? Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right, next, we have the 2024-25 final food service budget.
So before you is the final service, food service budget. We do have both Tony and Jamie here if you have specific questions.
Thank you, Rod. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
Is the budget on here what the budget is? By $170,000?
The front page is the summation of the changes. The second page is the summary showing total revenue, total expenses.
How much did they go up, Jamie? How much did it go up altogether?
The amendment to the budget?
Yes.
Revenue was increased $411,000, and expenditures were increased $403,000.
Okay, thank you. That's all in here. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Thank you, Chuck. And Holly? Okay, any other comments or questions? Be it resolved that the Swarts Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the final 2024-25 food service budget as presented. And Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Autumn Henry? I'm going to go no. No. Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard? Five yeses.
Five yeses. Motion passes. Next, we have the 2025-2026 preliminary food service budget.
So that was last year's budget. This is the prelim budget for next year. Again, we have our friends over there in the corner if you have any questions.
I would entertain a motion for approval. Are there any questions before we get a motion? Thank you, Chuck. Do I have support? Alyssa? I was hearing no comments or questions. Be it resolved that the Swarts Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the 2025-2026 preliminary food service budget as presented. And Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Next, we have the approval of Chartwell's 2025-2026 food service contract.
So as you know, in our food service, as you just passed both budgets, we use Chartwell's to execute our food service program. So this contract is to continue with Chartwell's for food services.
Thank you, Rod. Do I have a motion for approval? Kim? Any support? Holly? Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Be it resolved that the Swarts Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the food service contract for the 2025-2026 school year with Chartwell's Educational Services LLC as presented. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
No.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Next, we have the approval, approve the purchase of NWEA MAP Growth for Reading and Math.
Thank you. As we did at Academic Achievement, I think, two meetings ago, we looked at all the NWEA information. Michelle is here if you have questions. But basically, the law went into effect a while ago that you have to have a benchmark assessment. We have been using STAR. When you purchase STAR, it's under the title of Renaissance Learning, but the product is STAR Reading, STAR Math. There was a teacher-led initiative. This was not admin-led. There was a teacher-led initiative to switch assessments. You do have to pick your assessments based on those that are on the state allowable list for assessments for benchmark. They wanted to make a switch to NWEA. So we did a bunch of piloting this year on the literacy coach, or the instructional coaches, and Michelle and Jim were pretty excited. It does seem to be a little bit more robust, not only in the ability to print off much deeper reports with data, but also to hit a few more subjects than what STAR was giving us. And as always, this is a complete replacement and is done with grant money. So I think it's been 10 or 12 years that the state has been providing grant money for us to do our benchmarks. So it's a replacement for STAR, and it's used with grant money. If you have any other questions, Ms. Paul is here to talk.
I have just two questions. I did look at it. It says mostly grant money. Is that all grant money?
Year to year, the state gives us different amounts of money. So without knowing yet what they are budgeting, I just wanted it to state that it would be paid as, using all the grant money, and then if a little bit more is needed, we would need to use some general fund money from the curriculum department budget.
Yeah, it's been anywhere between $40,000 and $55,000 a year.
Okay, that's the only question I saw. It said mostly grant money. So what are you anticipating, Michelle, worst case scenario?
Yeah.
I mean, if that, if we have a past practice.
Worst case scenario, we might have to kick in $10,000 or $12,000 out of my department budget, curriculum department budget.
Is it already in the budget?
Yes.
Okay. And while I have you up here, I forgot to ask you last month, if you don't mind. It's still on curriculum.
Okay.
I've been getting on some, a lot of data, NISH, School Digger, all these things that report our grades and our progress, our decreases. Are those accurate in a STAR? We're getting rid of it. Is this going to affect that? Do you know that answer? Because right now, I see a lot of schools are using School Digger, NISH, other programs, so.
I'm not familiar with those particular programs you're naming. However, a lot of data that's out there goes off the state assessment. So a lot of the data that's published and used is the MSTEP data, grades three through eight, because that is what is readily available. It could be part of our STAR data. I mean, our NWA data will be reported similar to what our STAR data was, and you'll get reports to the board annually as well.
Okay. I did a little research, and some communities use NWA, some communities use STAR, and I wonder how that affected. So it's all funneled in. It says it's all from a certain site, and I guess I don't understand that when I get that data. And I guess I'm asking for some insight on that, so.
What, were those?
Well, because if the data's put into the system, and then these different groups are extracting the data, is it all going to be the same? Because I've been trying to compare them, three different sites.
They can only extract the data which is submitted either to the state of Michigan. So like, when you open up the school website, two pop-ups come up. One is the transparency report, which shows all of our spending. The other is my data.
My data, yeah.
And that one is pulling mostly from the state, so that's pulling from like the, while the last data they would have would be April of '24 scores and earlier.
So whatever we reported, they're going to get it, and it's fairly accurate.
Yeah, the state, we don't even have to report the state data because the state houses it. We do have a data hub that Travis often dumps information into that is located in Kent County that is tying into different programs. I would say that's less accurate than the state pull, but I think there are a list of what, four or five screeners the state says is allowable to use, and you're supposed to have a way to dump that data. But even over the years, we've had problems with Renaissance dumping the right number or not the right number of data. The kids, correct me if I'm wrong, I think NWA does a better job of keeping its longevity. STAR tends to erase everything after a year, and that's part of the issue.
Correct. We will have access to kids' data year over year and be able to compare. With Renaissance, if we wanted to keep data to compare back to, we would have to download it every year and then save it and manually compare, whereas NWA will do that for us and with us.
So these same sites that I've been researching, probably all the same data that this depends on. I guess, there's three of them. There is US something, and NISH, which is really recognized in school data. There's a third one, or fourth one. I'm sorry, but I can't, I don't recall. That's all. I just wanted to know. This data that they're extracting from us is coming from one source and not from several sources. But Rod answered that, because it's all going in from our facility.
I'd love you to email me what you're looking at, and I can help, you know, explain it.
Okay.
Anytime.
I'm good.
Thank you, Michelle. With that, I would entertain a motion for approval. Holly?
Support.
Chuck, support? Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Be it resolved that the Swarts Creek Community Schools Board of Education approved the purchase of a three-year subscription to NWEA MAP Growth for $170,400. Benchmark reporting and funding grant funds will fund the subscription to the extent possible, and general funds will be used for the balance. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Carrie Germaine?
Yes.
Alyssa Bouchard?
Yes.
Chuck Mulkey?
Yes.
Autumn Henry?
Yes.
Kim Winter?
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. And thanks, Michelle, for all the work that the teams did to identify this as an option. All right, next, we have the approval of Cage Site Work.
So this is the next project from the 24 bond, and this is the work at the cage. Jamie put together a package for you for bid recommendations. And you can see that electrical went to Murphy, site work went to Johnson's and Son, and asphalt went to Asphalt Specialists.
Any questions for Rod?
I have several.
Okay.
But I'll relinquish my spot if anybody else has any.
Anyone else?
I'm just asking, like, so we, we're going to vote on this, but the city of Swarts Creek hasn't approved the alternate drive yet? So we're going to approve it, and it might not even be necessary?
The package has it put in there as an alternate, so they have Plan A and Plan B. So we have not adding a second drive, or the opportunity to add a second drive, which would happen in Phase Two if it's blessed by the city of Swarts Creek. Right now, we're waiting on a traffic survey to, that the city of Swarts Creek wanted to have us conduct to give them additional detail on what an additional drive would do. So we're prepared to go either way.
Okay, where's?
So what would the cost be? I'm sorry.
I'm not seeing Plan A and Plan B, like, and those are itemized?
I believe it's the third page. The title is Contractor Recommendations. There's the fifth column, it says alternate C1, construct second parking lot exit. It would impact Johnson and the asphalt. So you can see there, there's fifty-two thousand from Johnson and eighty-five thousand for asphalt. Those costs are allocated to that second drive. So we have the cost for Plan A and the cost for Plan B. So there would be a savings if we did not get blessed to have that second drive. But again, the second drive is a designed plan, because when we have large events, there's a safety concern that, you know, traffic flow is very congested.
Okay, sorry, I zoned out. Okay. I'm trying to follow, I'm trying to follow. Okay.
I can't see anything.
So Jamie, you're looking at the column that says fifty-two thousand for Johnson's and Son and eighty-five thousand for asphalt specialists as part of the alternative?
Correct.
So eighty-five plus fifty-two, the alternative, goes through, and the bids overall were under expectation?
Correct. The total plan for including alternate one, which is the second drive, is under budget.
Okay, so let me, I guess I'm having a hard time with my eyes here. The total is one million?
Forty-two.
Forty-two thousand. I can see this one on the first page. I couldn't see the second page. And if we go through with Plan B, the alternate route, that will be an additional no money?
No, it'll be less.
It'll be less?
You're approving the total amount, assuming, hoping that we have the blessing for the second drive, which is our.
Okay, that's, that's easy. All right, thank you. All right. That would be my question. Can I take over for a minute here?
Yeah.
Okay. How many square feet is this total?
I'm sorry, Chuck, I'll have to circle back with you on the answer to that.
Okay, how about Mr. Bill?
There was no, um.
No additional.
No additional. It's a replacement. There might have been some across the front edge of the, the frontage of the building, because we were trying to park on both sides of that, and I think that's where you had given the great idea to put some of the barriers.
Yeah.
So that's, if there was extra, it would only come from that little frontage?
I, I, I just.
Because we asked, we actually wanted to expand.
I recall that meeting, and that was about two months ago, building and operations, if I'm not mistaken. And, yeah, I made just a couple of suggestions when we changed it, but I never got any hard numbers then, and I go by the square footage on what they're charging us to. How much asphalt are they putting down? Do you know that answer?
No, I don't, but I can certainly give you that information as a follow-up.
I want to vote for this, Jamie, but I can't without knowing those numbers. I, I, I just want to know inches of asphalt. Are they tearing it out? Are they putting in new storm sewers, Rod or Jim?
We do hire off construction to manage those details for us.
So there's no line item, like, breakdown of where this money's actually being spent, I guess, right?
Well, it, it's just when you have a bid, I would like to say, we're tearing out six inches, we're replacing with five inches of asphalt or six inches, we're putting a baseline down. I don't know if they're replacing the storm sewers. I, I'm assuming they are, but I don't know that, because it's not in here. And I feel uncomfortable with that, because I went through the last bond, not, nothing to do with you, but they always brought change orders and said, oh, we have to add eighty thousand for this or sixty thousand for this, and then the district gets hosed on that, because we have to pay it. I mean, we're, we're kind of at the will, because it's not in the original bid, and I feel uncomfortable, although I want to move the project along. But that's why I suggested a while back, maybe we should have a bond committee with one or two civilians from the district, and that way, just so we get more into, instead of just having our once-a-month building operations that go by in fifteen or twenty minutes. And then I feel uncomfortable voting on something and knowing there may be a change order for a little bit more money, which is usually, in their case, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty grand. So that, that, I'm not trying to trick anybody, I just didn't know if you had that in your bid specs detailed. And I think that's a legitimate question to ask.
Yes, they are, details that are included in a bid spec, absolutely, they would be included. Do I have them at the ready? No.
So is it just like catchwork of the asphalt, or they're doing the whole parking lot, like, around the back, the whole, both sides?
A whole replacement, tear out and replacement.
Okay.
And yeah, change orders are definitely normal activity in construction. There are unknown factors, and we do have contingencies in the budget for those, for that process. But I can certainly follow up with you on those two items.
I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
This is slated to start in July, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we vote on the twenty-eighth, or should we? I, I just don't feel comfortable. Well, I, I guess that's why we're here. It's a quorum, and that was our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. With that, I would entertain a motion for approval.
Well, I got one more, sorry. What is the cage currently being used for? I know it's like daddy-daughter dances and things like that sometimes, but like, are there any open gyms that we're hosting for teams?
Last, last night I was there, and, and my daughter's there tonight for cheer camp. Every single, I mean, there was, what, three basketball games last night, I think, too? I mean, it's, it's always.
I know they use that, where they do community ed.
They use it, yeah, they use it for indoor lacrosse practice as well sometimes, if the weather's not.
They use the heck out of it.
Like, I, I mean, I've used it for my signups for youth, just because of the size that it is. And I mean, that's just one court. The other courts are still being used for other things while I'm in there. I know, like, the youth basketball league uses it for all their games.
Sorry, I just meant all the games.
No, no, you're fine. It definitely, it's definitely getting used, for sure.
And pickleball, I know is actively.
Yeah. I think there's an, an adult men's basketball league potentially in there right now, too.
Oh, just, Bill, how big is the cage? Do you know square footage of the cage itself, the building? Me and you talked about square footage of buildings a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
And, and I'm not, I'm just trying to do some quick math, that's all. Just give me two seconds. I might get that. Because the parking lot's at least triple the size. Does everybody agree with that? Would you guys say triple? If you take one side, one side and put the cage on each side of the parking lot, I'm just trying to. And then you have a little bit in the back and the front.
And there's kind of like dual parking on the other side. But would there be anything, like, all the time, you can probably look at the cage, that would tell us approximately the size of the parking lot?
That, that's what he's, he's just, he's just answering now, I think, Holly. So.
The cage fieldhouse is forty-one thousand, six hundred square feet.
Really?
Yep.
Forty-one thousand square feet for the cage? That's great. So we'll just say eighty-two thousand square feet, then, because it's at least, maybe close to that. Where are we at? One point one?
I don't know, but AI says there's two hundred and fifty parking spots in the eighteen.
Oh, that's a great, I'm glad that you said that, because a parking spot is nine by eighteen. So nine by eighteen. I'm sorry?
Two hundred and fifty parking spaces.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's, that's a hundred and seventy-two square feet times how many? Two fifty? Thank you, Holly. That's great to know. I knew I could depend on you.
We'll figure it out.
Forty-three thousand square feet for the parking lot. Yeah, plus the drive, so we give it forty-six thousand square feet. No, I'm just trying to do the math on it. I'm good with math, but I can't. Fifty thousand square feet, I'll round it off to, that's twenty dollars a square foot to have it for all replaced. Well, fifty thousand square feet, now, maybe I'm wrong. Fifty thousand square feet, I'm doing it in my head, I'm trying to do it in my head. Times a million, or divided by a million forty-two thousand dollars would be two. And zero, carry the zero, yeah. No, it's twenty dollars a square.
So in this cage fieldhouse, resurfacing the parking lot proposed work was one thousand square feet, one hundred thousand square feet, sorry.
I, I have it at one hun, so that'd be ten dollars a square foot then. Ten dollars and forty-two cents a square foot. I think we have, unless somebody wants to use their calculator.
This is like an original page document where they proposed a resurface, like, that's all I'm reading.
Did you pull that from the old bond, maybe, or the old bids?
I have, sure.
Okay. I'll, I'll trust your judgment if it's a hundred thousand square feet.
I'm just reading on what they already put in this article. I mean, it has pictures of the whole parking area as well.
Are we just doing these because they need to be done?
No, that parking, the parking lot needs to be done. There's no doubt about it.
Well, yeah, I mean, like.
It's just the question is, is that a good price?
Chuck, did, I don't know if you heard that.
I'm sorry, no, I did, I'm sorry.
This is from a facility study, athletic core documents. So it's some kind of, I mean, I can hint, am I quoting?
No, no, I believe you.
No, 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 I just want to teach, we'd like to see the pictures, too.
And do a hundred thousand square feet divided by, by one, one point, a million fifty thousand. It should come out to ten dollars and forty cents a square foot. I'm just doing it in my head, I don't know. I'm just hoping.
Jamie, do you remember about how much under bid we were on this project?
Oh, that's a good question.
Under budget?
Under budget, yes, sorry.
Yeah. I, I think it was, we were pretty close to the budget, which, you know, sometimes is, we don't know what the market's going to yield, but I think it was only about thirty thousand under budget, with our contingencies in play.
Add that we won't take any changes, they're over that? No, we can't.
There was one bidder that.
We can't add that to the vote?
No, if they find something underlying that's not in the plan, they may have to come back, and that's, that's reasonable. They said, hey, listen, there's base missing or something, but.
The apparent low bidder was very low, and they, they withdrew their.
Yeah, I saw that. I did see that.
We did have some good competition for comparing rates. And again, it was a formal bid, so.
And, and you don't recall if they're, are they taking out the storm sewers and replacing all the catch basins?
I'm sorry, Chuck, I can't answer that question.
That, I, I won't carry that anymore, Carrie. Thank you.
Okay.
I have no more comment.
Can, can I get a motion, Chuck?
Well, could we do it one at a time? Like, does this whole thing have to be approved in one lump sum? Like, we can't approve the parking lot and then approve the electrical, like, out of one step?
No, it's, it's one project, and they, they all have to coordinate together to make those timelines happen. Construction season in schools is just the summer when the kids aren't there.
Yeah.
And as we were talking about earlier, the cage is actively robust every day, year round. So we were very mindful of that, so we broke it into two phases just to try and get it done. So it's very critical that they work together.
Shut it down, the inside and outside?
No, it will not shut it down. It will.
They plan on doing the, uh.
Have alternate routes.
Two phases, one half and then the other half. So this was, when, when we, when we submitted to the state all the bond projects that could be done with this money, this was the first. This is the first one that French and Ock thought could be completed in a, in a rather quick timeline. Otherwise.
I don't know anything about asphalt, but like, so I'm just, I guess, asking, Chuck, are you guys, I mean, is that a good rate, if that is what the size of the parking lot is, or is it?
It's normally six dollars and fifty cents to tear out asphalt all the way down, replace it with gravel, heavy gravel, E rock, and put in a brand-new blacktop drive-through board.
But.
We figured it at ten, and the biggest asphalt company, I mean, the, the asphalt companies from Pontiac, which I'm a bigger user of, local, but it does have a couple of local people in here. My question is, I'm, I'm not really, I, I gotta know if the storm sewers are being replaced, which is an extra cost, and running lines and all that, and that would justify the cost, if it went up to ten dollars and forty cents a.
There is stormwater activity.
There is storm.
Project, the degree of.
Because a couple of those basins were crushed when you drove over them. So I don't know if the entire parking lots get new storm water, but there are pieces that are getting brand-new storm water.
To replace a basement, basin's about anywhere from ten to fifteen thousand dollars. But it's, you have to run the pipe then from the basin out to the storm sewer water, which then is a heavy cost, and that's why I'm just being hesitant and careful. And I wish we could, you know, have more maybe in building or a, a bond committee to talk about that before we come here. Anyways, I'm not going to make a motion out here.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion, please? Anyone?
Because there is no way to make this wait for the next meeting, so, so that it's in like two weeks from the meeting. That, I mean, that would not be possible for us to be able to get that information to be, I'd like to, there's no way to get that information to make this happen. I'm just asking. Or is there a way to vote on it not here, like, if that information was given to us tomorrow?
You have to be in a quorum to vote in a public meeting. The information's all in the big packs. So these companies, these three or four per electrical site work, we're all bidding against each other based on those specs. So the information, the specific details of every nuance is in the bid pack, or they wouldn't have been able to put the bid together. So we chose the lowest bids out of the bidders who created it. I do think that the more you push it off, the more we'll probably miss timelines.
And potentially.
And you could have the bids go up.
And as you said, summer is a busy time, so we will go to the maybe middle or back of the line.
And the, the idea of public bidding is to preserve the best price. So the, the sheer activity of that process is supposed to give you the confidence that you're getting the best price. So that process alone.
Do you actually have the details if we were to take a short recess? You said that you could get it to me tomorrow. Do you have it readily available?
I can get it from Ock tomorrow to get to you, yes.
Thank you. Well, the bid, they, they take bids individually for these, and they bring us the best bids. But I just want to know what's, yeah, where are the details?
Often bid packs are very large.
Very detailed.
They involve specs and layers and layers of documentation, so it's, and again, the process they use is Procore, and it's an electronic process, so generally, it's not a printed document that we share between us on a site. But definitely, we can get that information for you tomorrow.
And you said that the lowest bid on one of them withdrew because he hadn't included everything.
Correct. Because all of our bidders, regardless of the lowest bid, are interviewed and validated for, did they fully understand, did they comply with the specs, are they a solvent company?
How much did it absorb, like, you know? Is there somewhere on here that tells me what the lowest, like, how much did it are we talking? Because, I mean, you already said that they definitely drew, assumed that they kind of understood what, that they probably didn't do it for that price, but.
I believe, Holly, if you looked at the, the last three pages, so we're talking about asphalt, so it'll be the second from the last, I believe, this document, which is handwritten, these are the prices that we summarize when we open the bid publicly. So the one that backed out.
Wasn't too far.
Um, I'm guessing, I was looking for the name, sorry, so I lost my place. So just going by the, the sheer numbers, they're the low apparent bidder is the phrase that we use, and then they get contacted for interview as well as, you know, potentially others, and then they pull themselves out. I don't know the details specifically if they did that on their own board, or it was as the interview process was advanced, that that become apparent that they need to withdraw their proposal, because they had missed a calculation or missed a spec. In either case, they could not fulfill the bid specs as defined.
Here's where I'm at. The, the public uses it, they love the cage, right? Let's, let's, I'll motion if you guys are ready. I said, the public loves the cage, they use the cage, we use it, right? Like, I'll motion if we're ready, but.
Their, their, their prices are, I mean, pretty close together, like.
Yeah, but then I'm just not going to give a lot of leeway when they come back with, oh, we need more money.
I wasn't questioning the bids. I was just questioning what is going in our parking lot, so we're not spending a million dollars, have to fix it three years again from now, like we did some with other things. That's my problem. I want to see that.
You still want to see the, what Chuck was asking for. So, I mean, up to you, whether you want to take it, or else I get you, or I'll take it, whatever.
Uh.
Do you want to do any motion, or you want to?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, I'll support you.
Okay, thanks.
But I do still want to see that, if you would, if you'd like to share.
Excellent. That'll be a follow-up by them for the board tomorrow.
All right, I have a motion by Autumn and one by Holly, support. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions?
I do have one, just, I do, no, just, I'm not gonna stop. I wanna, I wanna get point of order and get it through. Rod, if, if I, if we vote on it, I don't know what parliamentary procedure is, cause we haven't really adopted anything officially. I don't know if we can withdraw it. I don't know that answer. If we vote on something and then she gives us documents tomorrow, Ms. Jamie, and it's like, oh, no, this isn't cool. We can't, we can't, like, withdraw until we have another meeting.
Reconsider.
And by then we've already committed, right?
You can't withdraw it after you voted on it.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I'm asking.
The documents tomorrow are just gonna be the details. They're gonna line up with the bid numbers here.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. I'm sorry, Carrie, no more interruptions.
Okay, no problem. Any other questions? Hearing none. Be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approved the following recommended contractors. Murphy Electrical Services, Inc. in the amount of fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Johnson and Sons Excavating, I believe that is, Inc. in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars. An Asphalt Specialist LLC in the amount of six hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred dollars for this cage site work project with a total cost not to exceed one million, forty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars to be funded from the twenty twenty-five bond funds as presented. Uh, Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Alyssa Bouchard.
Yes.
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Carrie Jermaine.
Yes.
Chuck Milkie.
No.
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
And Hallie Jarvis.
Yes.
Five, yeah.
Thank you, motion passes. Um, all right, next we have the approval of the twenty twenty-five millage rates, L forty twenty-nine.
So as you know, the millage rates are set every year based on our millage, uh, numbers for operating sinking in debt to the local communities. Uh, Trune has drawn up the L four forty twenty-nine for your approval.
All right, I would entertain a motion for approval.
No move, Carrie.
Chuck. Uh, Alyssa. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, be it resolved that the Schwartz Creek Community Schools Board of Education approves the twenty twenty-five millage rates, L four zero two nine as presented. Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Chuck Milkie.
Yes.
Hallie Jarvis.
Yes.
Kim Winter.
Yes.
Autumn Henry.
Yes.
Andrea Fick is absent, sorry. Alyssa Bouchard.
Come on now, she hasn't been here all day. She's, she's, I'm just messing with her.
Alyssa Bouchard.
Come on. Drinking water or not?
And Carrie Jermaine.
Yes.
Six, yes.
All right, I should've mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that, um, Andrea's not able to join us tonight, but please, everybody wish her well. Um, and she has a graduate, just as an aside, that is not related. Um, wish him as well as he celebrates his open house in the next week. So I know Andrea's gonna be busy, but that was not the reason she wasn't here. So I just wanna congratulate them. All right, next on the agenda, we have public comments. If anybody would like to address the board, please step, uh, to the podium. State your name and keep your comments to three minutes or less, please.
Okay. Don Ludwig, five one four one Maple Avenue. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank the young lady in the hallway here, the officer, for being here against the big protest that was gonna happen today. Thank you for having our safety. I don't know where that rumor came from today. Um, so I guess I'm the protester.
You don't look dangerous.
Yeah. I guess, uh, I have a question and hopefully this can get brought up on the board, concerns or comments. Um, the proposal for the school coming, um, how did this transpire? How did we, all of a sudden, now we have, uh, an offer for the school? I know, um, my next door neighbor, it, it just happens to be Jamie. Um, she is sold, she has moved, um, other relatives have moved into her home. And I just don't know if there's like a co- uh, conflict of interest, cause it seems like they both went bam bam. It seems like they both came out of nowhere. I've emailed Rod a month ago, asked him if any of the, uh, rumors were true, true that a, uh, proposal or offer was on the school, never received an email back. Um, the other big concern I have is, I heard a lot of praise today at the beginning of this meeting about how great everybody does this job, from our maintenance department to janitors to, to whoever. Um, I guess I gotta ask, why are you wanting to leave, Rod? Put an application in, in Zeeland for superintendent job? I, I, this is just a great community. I, I don't understand. We, we have everybody's back. This, this is a great town. Um, I fight for this community. I, I don't know what to say. It, it just shocked me when I got that, uh, anonymous message the other day. I'm, I'm disappointed. You know, it's, um, a very great school system. It's heart wrenching, you know? I live right down the street from Morse and I watched those buses honking and all the kids leaving today. And I'm thinking, this is a tight community. Why are we doing this? Why do we wanna leave this community? I don't. I wanna stay here. So hopefully, hopefully this makes some sense. Um, I, I don't have no problems with anybody, anybody that wants to get a new job or move or do whatever they'd like to do. Hey, more power to you. We all have to look out for our families in the best interest. One day I'm gonna have to look out for my family. My house is inside that mega site zone. But right now, if it's not safe for students, I don't feel it's safe for people on the other side of, uh, Maple Avenue with well waters and all that other stuff. What, what makes the difference between a second grader or a seventy-nine-year-old grandma? Everybody's life is equal. You know, so I want you to take that in consideration for, in two weeks when that offer comes in. Um, they're, they're like used car salesmen. They're gonna, they're gonna tell you, hey, ten, ten billion dollar building, five thousand jobs, but is it worth our community? I don't think so. So. Hopefully, I appreciate your time. I appreciate everybody doing here. I love what everybody does in Schwartz Creek. The school system is phenomenal. My, my son's, uh, got his master's from Michigan State. My daughter is a great student here at the high school and I just wanna keep things this way. You know? Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir, I just missed his name, um, cause.
Don Ludwig.
Thank you.
Anyone else? That was for you.
Sure.
Just need your name and three minutes or less, please.
Okay. Um, my name is Hannah. My daughter is six and attends Irene. I'm here today in hopes the board can recognize the failures of the administration affecting students. As administrators, you're responsible for actions of staff members and for correcting their mistakes. My daughter has been failed by this district at six years old and is expected to follow rules and handle her emotions more thoroughly than adults in charge of these students. I have some examples. Um, Board Policy forty-two oh one states professionally communicating with students, parents, et cetera, including through electronic means. Are we now considering asking a six-year-old child if she needs a diaper and a patsy while they're crying professional? Is a teacher refusing to respond further messages because they're offended that a child expressed they feel their classroom is toxic professional? Board Policy forty-two oh two is referring to sexual abuse and states that within twenty-four hours of an alleged incident, an administrator must make an appropriate report to the Michigan State Police as required by law. Please tell me why when my daughter attended Gaines last year and was sexually abused in her classroom, I was the only one to make a report. After I had met with Mr. Kitchen and he asked if I made a report and I told him no, a report was still not made. Board Policy forty-two oh two states that employees will not interfere with or adversely impact a parent's right to determine and direct their students' care, well-being, teaching, and education. My daughter was told that she did not qualify for an IEP or five oh four because her behavior was not bad enough and we opted for a behavior chart. The school was supposed to progressively take it away in phases, making it from a half day to a full day. Um, instead, they determined based off data that she did not need it anymore. And for three months, her behavior regressed no matter how much I asked to reinstate her chart. Board Policy fifty-eight oh five states regarding auto recordings. Unless otherwise authorized by this policy, law, or district employee, students may not make recordings on school property. After my daughter told me for months about her teacher's mistreatment of her and attempts to address it with her teacher and being told my daughter was lying, I witnessed her antagonize my daughter into a fit over losing recess time while I was at the school. After reading Michigan law and voice recording in a public place and determining it is a hundred percent legal for her to do such, I sent her to school with a voice recorder, which resulted in a ten-day suspension for a six-year-old and a recommendation that we switch her to a different district, which we cannot even do because of a suspension. After telling Mr. Kitchen, the Board Policy states unless the law says otherwise, he told me he was standing on his decision to suspend her for ten days. The school has also called my child's pediatrician behind my back and requested they redetermine her doctor's note because her alternative to medication for ADHD was too distracting and never had authorization forms to contact her doctor and never spoke to me first. My daughter now has a mile-long discipline record between acting out while being sexually abused and staff mistreatment and mishandling of behavior interventions that will follow her through her whole life. And something needs to be done for my child and children in the future who are in elementary school, who are expected to act as adults.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Yeah. Well, please stay ma'am, so I can talk to you after the meeting.
My name's Hannah.
Hannah, yeah, I, I call people ma'am and sir, just oughta have it, but.
Do we, do we normally send those to the cops? Or do, or are those like the threats? They have to be assessed, even though it's a crime? Or, do those cops know anything about it, out in the hallway?
I'm not gonna talk about specific issues or instances.
Well, that was kind of a big deal.
I wanna respect the family and the child's part, privacy and this can be discussed.
So when's the appropriate time?
I would, I would ask you to talk to.
This isn't the first time I've heard things like this.
I'll, I'll waive my privacy if you would like to speak on it.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna move on.
Well, she did take the time to come here and she's had a relief if she stopped the gym and.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna risk the chance that her child's identity comes out.
I agree a hundred percent.
And that a teacher is identified or any information that's identifiable.
Can I make an additional quick comment? I did FOIA information from the state police and there was never any report filed except for the one that I made myself after our meeting and after it was acknowledged that I hadn't made a police report yet.
So I would, I would suggest that you follow up with Mr. Heatherton. Okay?
I've tried following up on multiple things lately and I haven't been receiving emails back.
All right, thank you.
This is the problem. They come to us as a last resort.
I'm not going, I'll say it again.
And then we get sent back to square one.
We're not going to talk about a specific, it's, we are at risk.
Got it.
I'll talk to you one more time.
We are at risk for divulging the identifi- identification of a child and we cannot do that. So I apologize that we are not able to do that. I don't think you want your child's identity shared with the public. But we will, um, have a conversation after this to make sure that you have a response. And, okay? All right, thank you.
I just have one quick question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Did you say that somebody from the school called your child's doctor?
Yes. Um, the, uh, social worker actually at Irene called my child's doctor and requested that they change her doctor's note. Um, my doctor's office called me and informed me about it and I immediately sent them an email asking why. Um, right before this happened, we had an IEP meeting and they asked me to fill out a form that gave them permission to speak to my child's doctor and I refused. Um, I felt anything that happened between my child and her doctor, if I wanted it relayed, could be relayed by myself. And, um, shortly after that, they actually called my doctor, my child's doctor.
Again, I would encourage you to, um, have a conversation and you're welcome to stay after the meeting. Okay? Thank you very much. Anyone else like to address the board, please?
Brian Bender, nineteen eighty-two graduate, which means I'm old. Uh, I'm apologizing if this is a redundant question. There's a published report, Rod, that you are up for a job in Zeeland. In light of your new contract, is that still the case?
I can address these during, uh, board comment if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Um, let's see. Any comments or questions from the board?
I have a couple. Thanks for being brave and coming forward with that. And also I just wanted to congratulate Chuck for his, he got a, uh, Gaines Township. He got a position there to run their, or, you know, help their fire department and liaison, police department, security officer. So.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Autumn. Congratulations, Chuck. Anyone else? I want to, um, congratulate our six new teachers. Um, it's always amazing. Schwartz Creek continues to attract some very talented folks. I know we only got the snippet of their talent written in front of us, but I've heard from the administrators and the folks that were involved that they were really good candidates. And so thank you for choosing Schwartz Creek. And, um, thank you, Bill, for your first report to the board. I'll say it again, you did a great job and I know you, you and your team worked very hard. You have a lot of, uh, plates in the air, as they say, you know, the spinning plates? And you guys do a great job. You too, John. You keep a smile on your face, always. Do you drive buses occasionally too?
Yes, I have to, yes.
Yes, I thought so. Um, and.
Carrie, can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure, go ahead.
A question that I just had is if, if we can just address like all of the fake news that is out there right now?
Certainly. Would you like to start?
Well, yeah, um, you know, I'm seeing a lot of comments that are on social media, um, regarding the school board members signing NDAs, which for me, that's not the case. So I just would like to address, to address that, the fake news that's out there. That it's not happening.
No, it's not.
Yeah. That, yeah, that, that was.
Can we ask if that's across the board?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna say. She's not speaking for all of us, but probably for herself.
Right, I'm, I'm saying it for myself.
County Township, which is where it's coming from? If everybody would speak on that, that'd be great.
I have not signed any NDA.
Has anybody in our administrative staff had?
No.
I have not signed.
As I've repeated probably for a year, all of these decisions have come to the board and the board decides on them, not individual administrators. I don't know why.
So this is an old rumor then?
Correct.
Oh, okay, so we brought it up now, though.
I wanted to bring it up just to clear the air, just because I'm seeing a lot of that fake news and it, it's not, I mean, for me, it, it hasn't happened. So that's why I wanted to bring that up.
Just tell people you didn't.
What?
If it just tell people you didn't then, if you got, you know?
When you do, you get attacked.
When you tell them you haven't signed an NDA, you get attacked?
Yeah, I have screenshots to prove it.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's the problem with social media. So I'll take my turn, Carrie. I just have a few quick things. Bill, thank you.
Sure.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Travis, you did a great job. Wake up. You did a good job, Sue. Stay off the vodka. Um, for the young lady, Ms. Hannah, that came in, you're very brave, as Autumn said. And there should be a relief for the public. I mean, you take time out of your day. This is a comment that, uh, people come to the board and they have to have some relief somewhere. Um, I've always felt, I've been in public service for forty-eight years, when I turned sixty-four here in a month. And I've been in since I was seventeen and I've always, uh, felt discouraged and felt bad for people that take time out of their day. I know some of it may be false rumors or lies or whatever, but they still have a right as a citizen of the United States to come to their public body and talk. And I know most of our policies are not to answer questions, which is good, cause we don't wanna get in an argument with anybody. This is our business. But I'm discussing our business and, uh, that's why I asked, uh, the young lady to stay and I would be more unhappy to talk to her if you went through our chain of command, cause you should have some relief. Um, and there is privacy, as Ms. Carrie has said. And as far as non-disclosure acts, thank you for saying that. I don't even, I don't have one. I don't even live close to it or anything like that, so I don't know why I would. And if any of our, uh, staff have had any dealings with the mega site, then, um, I know they probably can't disclose prices and stuff, but they probably should disclose that they were in that. Cause if they make decisions on purchases, I don't know if that has anything to do with it. I'm sure it doesn't. But I would like to know that. And, um, other than that, it went smooth tonight. And as Carrie said, I do wanna compliment our administrative board for hiring really good people. They seem like they're all good young people and hopefully they'll stay with Schwartz Creek for a long time and give us a lot of, uh, mileage on their vehicle. I don't wanna wear them out, but I'd like seeing young people and they have tons of experience. And, uh, other than that, thank you, Carrie, and, uh, hopefully we'll move on.
Thank you. Anyone else? Rod?
Thank you. Um, yeah, it is public knowledge. That's the way superintendent interviews go. Um, that's. I don't have to comment.
I didn't know about it. I, I honestly, I didn't know, Rod.
No, no, the question is, am I commenting or not?
Oh, okay, no, you don't have to comment, you're right.
Well, I was going to, and then the board members stopped, so just asking.
Well, I'd just like to follow the agenda, that's all. And that one's, that's from the board.
I asked Rod if he had any comments.
Oh, okay, I thought you said go ahead.
Yes, superintendent interviews are public knowledge. It's the way they work. Yes, superintendent interviews are public knowledge, it's the way they work, so people are aware that I have an interview in Zeeland. Someone's asked, isn't this a great community? It's a great community, I've spent forty-six years in Gaines Township of my life, of my fifty-two years. Love it, ninety-one grad, my kids are twenty grads, twenty-one grads, and, uh, sixteen. My mom's a nineteen sixty-eight grad. My grandpa went to Mary Crepo when it was a one-school. Love this community. Been giving it twenty-one years of blood, sweat, and tears, so. Why would I look? It's a great question, I, I, I don't, I don't know how to answer that, I, I have not looked at any other opportunity. I'm a faithful man, I'm a prayerful man, and it was in my, uh, personal life with my wife and my God and my family, that I should pursue this opportunity. And I'm obedient to my faith and my God and my family.
Thank you, Rod. And we do appreciate you and, um, the efforts that you've given to Swartz Creek. I know I've known you for at least eighteen or more years and seen your evolution. Um, for those of you who don't know, the selection of a superintendent and the applicant pool, there are usually very many people in those pools, so to even be invited to be in that pool or the candidates, um, is, um, very impressive, regardless of the school district. And so thank, thank you for your service, and also thank you for, um, you know, keeping us relevant as a school district. So, thank you, I appreciate it. Um, anyone else?
Can I respond to that?
Uh, no, we're past public comment, but thank you.
The, uh, the property that we owned at Hill and Marsh, I was not a board member at the time. When did we sell that? I think you were a board member, Carrie, roughly, I'm not asking for an.
I, I don't know what year it was, Chuck, we leased the property for, um, for a period of time of, from a farmer, and then we eventually sold the land back to that same individual, I believe. I don't, I don't know what year it was, nor do I remember the value.
What property are we talking about?
Hill and Marsh.
I was, uh, principal at Marsh at the time.
Okay.
So it's over ten years ago.
All right, so we sold it ten years ago. Do you know the price, Rod? I mean, if you don't know, you don't.
Just, I know that the range was somewhere around one eighty.
Okay. Thank you. Make a motion to close the meeting.
Thank you, Chuck. Kind of you, Autumn, uh, support, any comments or questions? Uh, hearing none, uh, those in favor for adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.